Interested?
Are you gonna do? Do you need to do a Zoom talk since we're here in person?
I didn't bring my Zoom script, so.
You did or you didn't?
Did not.
I don't know if we need to do, I was kind of debating that.
Think we know everybody on the call so far, we're probably all right.
Okay, I'll just call to order, that's why I asked. I called to order the Adrian City Commission Special Meeting for March 22nd, 2021. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Robin.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Mr. Hou.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Present.
All commission members present.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution R 21-035 is from Parks and Engineering. It is a resolution to award a bid for the 2021 construction season for improvements to major and local roads.
And we're asking that you table this again, now you had tabled it to this meeting, but we are still in the process of getting the commitment agreements from the non-city properties signed up, so you would have the option to table it to the 29th when we have a special meeting, which would probably be optimal from Matt's perspective, or your first meeting, right after that is your special meeting on April 12th.
So, may I get a motion to table Resolution R 21-035 to March 29th, 2021?
Don't move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Motion to table Resolution 21-035 to award a bid for 2021 construction season for improvements to major and local roads is approved to be tabled until the March 29th, 2021 meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to our budget discussion. I'm going to hand it over for the overview to our city administrator Greg Elliott and for financial advisor Nathan Owen. I was like, could we take your time over here?
Finance director sometimes, too. I'll give you the really, really high level view and then I'll turn it over to Nathan to get the further general high points. Obviously, we presented a balanced budget to you. It is, it does represent an increase over the prior fiscal year's budget. The things that underlie the budget are presumed 3% wage increase for employees. We have additional monies based on our actuarial numbers going for the defined benefit program and the amount, and the additional amount of $247,545. Nathan will give you the total amount of that infusion that we're going to put into there when he does his comments. The, as we looked at the community development department, we found that it was very far from covering its costs in terms of the revenues that it brings in and being a fee to pay department. We wanted to try to bring it closer in line to that, and so we're proposing a 25% fee increase with respect to construction inspection, planning and selling, and real housing inspection fees. We've plugged into 21, 22 what we, the amount we assume will come from the American Rescue Plan Funds that were recently approved by Congress. See on your cover sheet there, we're going to get roughly $1,017,000 in each of this year and next year. We're presuming that that will go into the balancing of next year's budget for the reasons that I'll discuss in a moment. We eliminate in 21, 22 the motor vehicle pool, which has been part of the budget in the past. In so doing, there's a fund balance there of $800,000, which will go into the general fund, fund balance. We're using $154,694 of that also to balance the budget, but as you'll see, there's a number of motor vehicle purchases that are going to occur in 21, 22. So, the first set of items on your cover sheet there are capital items that we have proposed to fund in the current budget, totally $1,151,622. You'll recall that in the administrative bird's budget last year, most capital purchases were removed in an effort to keep that as tight as possible, and so both because we generally are, have been behind in replacing capital items and because we didn't do anything about that and anything much about that in the current budget. With the closing of that amount of replacement in the current budget, there's a nice balance, we feel, between the infusion of the American Rescue Plan Funds and capital purchases, and that's how we wanted it to be, so that those funds were not going to fund operations and operations will be funded, funded in a sustainable manner. But it's bringing us back up closer to current in terms of capital items. Those are the remarks I wanted to make at the beginning, and if I want to share things you want to share.
In a couple areas. Probably wondering about the rescue funds, that's all fairly new, as we all know. Have some limited information on that, but what we understand is it's going to be two payments, or you have one in this current fiscal year, so just before a year end, and then the second one is supposed to be a year later. We budgeted for that in this upcoming budget. They're saying it's going to be less restrictive than the CARES funds and how we can spend it. But obviously, we don't have that guidance yet, so we should wait on that. We have actually until December 31 of 2024 to spend these funds. That's another consideration for you all up here. You know, thinking of projects or down the road, so it doesn't have to be all spent at once, so. But as we get more information on that, we'll keep you updated on how that, those funds will work. Oh yeah, as you see, the pensions up again. The total, this is for general fund, the 247 increase across the board is just over 361,000 difference from last year. That we're seeing that continuing to go up for the next few years. And hopefully start to go down a little bit with the changes that we are making, but that will definitely take time.
As in the total amount that we'll be putting into the funding?
Yes, for next, for next year, it's just over 2.2 million. To define that with employer contribution. Other than that. Do they have, unless you guys have questions or?
But let me make one other note on the American Rescue Plan Funds. It's important to note that a condition of that program is that you can't use it to substitute for other revenue sources. In other words, you can't take the money and then cut taxes and use it to plant the tax revenue that you no longer have. That's one of the hard and fast conditions.
And they can't be used towards pensions either, speaking of pensions. That's what we do know.
So if there are any questions on the, on the overview, we'd be happy to address those, otherwise we have, we're too here to talk about the this department's, these departments.
Greg, what was the thinking when you like, you know, like the Harry's Park Christmas decorations, like what was the thinking of cutting that? So you're telling me that we're not going to have that at all this year?
Uh, these would be extra decorations that we would buy to supplement what we already have.
Because we added on to it this year from last year, right? Correct?
Or? Matt can tell you when he gets here, but.
People are really happy. Wow, I thought this was a total cut of the actual.
No.
Okay.
No, these were, these were extra, and, you know, so prioritizing, we felt, you know, and, and obviously, we could put these things back and we can talk about that tonight, but prioritizing, we felt like that wasn't as high priority.
We generally spend up to $10,000 each year on buying new decorations for, for weekend decorations.
I have a comment, and I have a question to pull back. My understanding is, in terms of the format of the budget and the information that's been provided, that our city charterer says that we have to use the last eight months, not the last six months, for comparison purposes. So I know we've got this fiscal year 2021 through December. My understanding is the eight months would take us to the end of February, and that's what the charter requires. So when we go before the public with a public hearing, it would be good to have the number spread.
Yeah, we just, yeah, just close out February so we can get those, get those in there.
Okay, so on the, the overview here on the capital not funded, I think, you know, a lot of this makes sense. We've all, I think, been exposed in the last week or two with regard to the pickleball courts. And I'm not sure that there's anything all that controversial about it. In addition to the pickleball courts, I would like to see added into this section a splash pad for the historic east side of the area.
If you want a pencil and a splash pad number, that's about 90,000 installed. Matt can speak to that when we get to this.
As long as it's a nice one and not, and not a.
Because what I have here.
Can, can filled with water.
I, I will tell you that Matt and D'Angelo and I had met, D'Angelo Boone was looking at a grant at one point to try to get the splash pad, but he couldn't do it at the time because they said he was, it was too late. And I actually have figures for a splash pad, and it was, for the splash pad was 135,000. And that was water components at 40,500, mechanical equipment at 13,500. Freight was almost 70 grand, you know, so there's different things like that, but it all added up to about 135,000. That's not like benches sit around it, that's an, and receptacles, that's another $10,000. But that's what that added up to just for that, when we were looking at it, when he was going to try to get a grant. He was going to have to put it off for at least a year because they told him it was going to be out that far. There's no guarantee he would ever, they'd ever get it anyways, but, but I do have those figures only, and we just got these. I got these figures I got in November, we've been, because we've been talking about this for a while. So, just so you're aware, I actually have figures on that.
Yeah, so, so my feeling is, we've talked about doing something for the historic east side for a long, long time. Several commissions back in fact, and we haven't done anything, so bundling this project along with the pickleball courts to the west side, I think would just make a lot of sense. And I appreciate the support of everybody here who says that they support all the citizens for our city.
The whole for splash pad with benches and receptacle over in the pickleball court, we're calling it what's more sense, right?
Sounds about right.
Yep, make sure I have that in my memo.
As we get into talking about those items, again, appropriate for Matt's portion, but it's important to keep in mind that those, especially the splash pad, now inject operational costs into the budget as well. And staff, and potentially staffing needs are not part of what's currently budgeted. I should mention also that in terms of the overview, that this budget adds two new positions. One is a combined DPW worker slash assistant mechanic to help transition from Nick's work at DPW, given his proximity to retirement. It's important to bring some of the, help start learning the ropes, Nick will still there. And the others, is it a half time?
Part time.
Fire. Uh, part time, no benefits for it.
Part time, no benefits clerical for part time. That's good, can talk about this.
I know that there has been some discussion among a few commissioners through that these projects, and it may be the whole shooting, that do not have to wait until the next fiscal year. We've got the funding available now that we could do these projects. If we can get Matt to move forward with getting quotes and whatnot, we could move both on the pickleball and the splash pad. So that maybe before the end of the summer, somebody be able to get some use out of it.
Yeah, obviously, we're going to add to fund balance this year, and that kind of goes without saying. We sold, or will have sold a million eight, we closed at a million three of the property. We won't close, I expect on the other 500,000, 180,000 of property sales as well, that'll be added to fund balance, so obviously, if we get our American Rescue Funds as anticipated this year, that's a million dollars that's going to go right in the fund balances we've set up right now, and they don't want to excise tax, we'll have 168,000, which is every that way as well.
Where are we at currently with fund balance? Take out the CARES Act money and take out the, the second parcel from the objective growth sale. Where are we at right now? Could we close on the 100 and whatever acres, right? So we got the 1, 1.3. So where are we at right now with fund balance? What, what's our number?
A general fund, you're high 7 million. That's just rough.
Does that include this? My answer?
Uh, that does not, no. So plus, that's through. That will already 28.
So we're high sevens without the 1.3, you're telling me?
Yeah.
With that in mind, and we've done this year over year, I'd like to see a material investment in that pension to get that moved down as we start to work through this. You know, we've got some real cash, and we can make a real difference on that pension thing without even touching or coming even close to smelling like we're using any of that American Rescue Funds. And I think that would be a very prudent thing to do. And, and I leave it up to you guys to come up with that number, but I mean, I think the last couple of years, we put a half a million buck chunks in there, and I think we haven't been in this good a financial position, so I, I would think that it would be the right time to make a move on that.
Yeah, this, this budget, we did not make a contribution. It wasn't one budgeted, or so far we haven't made a contribution. Last year, yes or no?
Not last year. With the COVID, Nathan, it was.
Well, that's, that's this one.
Or 1920.
2021 and 1920, did you make one?
No, did not. Right at the, right when COVID was starting out, we usually look at the end of the year and see where we're at around June and.
And that was smart, like I.
Yeah.
I agree, you know, being conservative of that, but like, like Commissioner Watson says, I think that, you know, we don't take CARES Act money out of it. We can, we can, we can be part of some of the capital stuff, but making a substantial investment, because we know the three components to get that liability up, which is multiplier, and from a DB to a DC, which we've done those two things, and we put surplus on it, so. I think it's a very prudent move, and then we have the cash to do it, and so very responsible.
I agree too, it was on my list, so.
Yeah.
I definitely.
The, the other thing on the pension front or the, the defined benefit front that we would expect to do in the upcoming fiscal year, not before then, is work on the bridge down for the nine staff. We have to work out what that looks like, and they're all aware, obviously, of what the unions got in exchange for that. Something in exchange for it, but I don't think it would be a surprise to anyone that that bridge down is, is coming.
And, and that's, this also leads into just having, you know, the extra right now, I know I talked to you earlier today about it, but you know, I would really like to see, quite honestly, the spring cleanup comeback. We've had a lot of requests for it. And we kept telling everyone in the past, we didn't have money, because we didn't. But now I feel like is the right time, and we really are trying to make this big initiative to really push for, you know, like really ridding the void in our city, and that's a major way to accomplish that and to help the citizens. And we've been, I was getting requests, but I didn't realize Michelle was getting inundated when I talked to her. She's already been getting a lot of emails as well. And I, I've seen things on social media as well, and I just know the community's really wanting that to come back, and, you know, well, it's, I, I just feel very passionate that I feel like this, like this spring would be the right time. We haven't had one in a while, and just to really bring that back and, and really, and provide that service, because it is something that they've really been wanting.
And since 2018, the number is about 120,000.
If I remember, I, I mean, I think it's a good idea, if I remember correctly, though. Uh, we had budgeted originally, I think the last time we did it for like 85,000, and then when the bill came in, it was for like 120, 125, something like that. And everybody assumed it was just from people outside of the city bringing their crap into their friends' houses and putting that on. You know, on the curb. I don't know how you prevent that. I think we just have to budget for the fact that it's going to be 120, 125,000 dollars. Because it is what it is.
I, I would like to see if neighboring townships and cities are doing a spring cleanup. And if they are planning one for this year, we wait and do ours after the year. So that hopefully we will not have quite as much that are coming in from the townships or other cities.
That's a good idea.
One of the, that was one of the main issues. We, we make this assumption, and I know I saw personally on my street where people would, who did not live there, put stuff out on our street.
Right.
How do we prevent that? I don't know, but I do think it's important. I go back to education. We tell our citizens, you are paying for this, not a township resident. So if you want to pay for your township friends to don't own your property, well, your taxes are going to go up.
I agree with the mayor, though. I think it's necessary. We haven't done it for a couple of years. If you don't give people a place to dispose of, they're going to end up on their front porches or just sitting on the curb for weeks at a time. So it's, it's a good time to do it like that. Again, I don't want every, every answer to be, hey, we've got the money, let's spend it, but we've got a lot of money that, that we ought to be, we ought to be putting to the year.
It comes out like, like I told Matt when we talked about the dumpster on the back about, you know, that we did it out, or we just, I don't know what, what the issue was. I just, and then we'll, our thing was, you know, last night around the commission, when we negotiated that trash contract, we wanted the, every other year to be in the truck, to be in the contracts, we bring all the players to the table, then they get the best price, and then, then we, we didn't do that, we didn't did it out. Took Steve, and they arbitrarily went, the commission before last night went $24, $30 arbitrarily. Build us how waste fund up in about three years, because we did, what would we do, two or three years, like, you know, I know, three years ago. And just drove that number down, and obviously, we know we have to have a certain amount of cash flow and that fund to, to pay our trash bill. Um, so citizens don't want us to be a bank. I mean, it's one of those things where we have, we have to come up with a conservative number and fund balance. And then we need to offer service, and then spring cleanup is, I, I've done about two, one Facebook message and then another email. But it's wanting to know if you're going to have or not, and, and I, I told her, we didn't have my, I, they haven't talked about the money, but we clearly do, so. Um, again, they want us to offer service, they don't want us to afford the money. And, and I'm just as conservative fiscally as anybody at the table here, and then I'm saying that we need to start the one-time capital things, going to be spring cleanups, splash pad, pickleball, something to enhance the quality of life. We, as a group, brainstorm and, and then, you know, start checking some of these off, so.
And I guess you, you brought up the, you know, the two new positions, but I guess I have the question, like, what if we, we haven't been able to get a community development director yet? What if that doesn't happen? Like, what, where are we going from there? Because there, there's that, sorry, but there's that position, and we need, we need somebody in that position.
And it is budgeted, so I mean, that's a relatively large number, too, when it comes to the whole package as, as a, as a department head, so. It's a good question, man.
We, we've reviewed our, like, all of the employees' jobs and done, like, just chill, like, went through everybody's job description to make sure that we're doing everything. Not with, and not, not the right words, right? Like that we're working
for paying a competitive salary.
Well, no, and I'm not, I'm talking about, like, their job is, is everybody working efficiently? Thank you for the complete word, sorry. Is everybody working efficiently? Is there, could we do, could we divide some jobs differently to make everything more efficient? If we can't find a community development director, is there somewhere we could divide a few things or change a few things out to make it more efficient? Like, we, and I know we just talked about the city clerk's position. They mentioned Marsha Rowley, who I used to sit on her lap when I was a little kid, had the PD, so. She, she was here a long time, a long time ago. Is there, I just wondered if there would then, have we looked to make sure everybody's, everything's efficient? Is there a way we could make things more efficient? As we ponder what to do in this position?
And one of the things I think I hear you saying, too, is maybe this is something we've got to start thinking outside of the box. And that's the best way of putting jobs together to be more than most efficient. And I have a question, too, for Mr. Elliott, because I wonder about this, like, every week. Where do we stand with all of the city staff having performance evaluation on a regular basis, like annually? Is that happening? I've been told in the past that it doesn't.
Well, it's done department by department, and I can't.
So hesitant to answer the question, could they be on file in her department, right? These human resources.
Don't know that they are necessarily all filed with her.
Okay.
I mean, I don't have an answer for you as to.
Okay, that's fine. If you could find out, that would be helpful, I think. Because I want to make sure, one of the only ways I know of making sure things are happening efficiently is that by looking at what people are doing, what job descriptions say they're doing, and what their evaluation is. You know, are the jobs they're supposed to be doing getting done? So, you know, those are all components, at least in my mind, of things that have to happen as to make these evaluations. But, yeah, I think we need to think outside of the box and look at essence, because it is an important job, and I know that the administrator has been working hard to try to get that job filled, but there are just not a whole lot of candidates out there in the world who want to come to either mission and to be our community development director. At least that's my sense.
Yeah, and I mean, that just happens to be the department that positions the state currently, right? It's not unique to that position. We, whatever, the higher, kind of the dynamic for us in terms of hiring is the higher up you go, harder it is to find qualified candidates that will relocate here or locate within range of here to take those positions. Before the development, it was finance. Missed out there in terms of trying to fill the finance director position as well. So it's, it's not unique to community development. In terms of the efficiency question, yeah, I wasn't here, of course, at the time, but many of you will remember that we cut pretty deep into staffing a few years back at the time of recession, great recession, and, you know, those cuts mostly remain in place, you know. Mostly remain in place, you know, the development director position coming back. Which only came back in twenty nineteen when I filled it. Was a step back from all those cuts back towards the normal structure that is envisioned by the. By the city code, but. Some of those consolidations remained and anything we are. Probably a little too vague.
You said too lean?
Too lean, yes, I, I mean, I think we, you know, for example, as we're talking about, uh, you know, the these recreation resources. Right, and one of the things that got cut was Parks Department, the real Parks Department, where it was a separate department and the Recreation Department. You know, those things that haven't come back. Still have Matt trying to be the city engineer, GPW director, the Parks director, and we don't have a recreation. Try to collaborate with the schools and the why, but uh it's not coordinated.
When we talk about building a splash pad, I just doing some touring with Jason, I know, and we were talking about what that. How many employees that department had at one time compared to now, it's very different. And I would hate to add one more thing to this plate or et cetera that. Um is difficult to manage if we don't have the manpower to do it and, cause then something else always gets, right? So I certainly want to put that, I would love to put that splash pad in, I think we should, but I think we need to consider. Who's going to care for it too, I I heard, like, like you said, I think that's, when we're adding quality, we have to make sure we add quality.
I think that what the mayor can see, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, she's, she's asked the question like, what if we don't, what if we have trouble filling that position for community development? What's our plan? What are, what's our plan? Cause again, we have a huge initiative we're gonna launch here very soon, so what is the plan? With that money, those budget, essentially, that's what. And and you know, when it comes to other components of it, like when it comes to the parks and and engineering, I've been pounding that table for years. I sat here with the former engineer, uh and I had a very aggressive conversation in this type of setting and. Things get slipped off, not not by the individual's fault, it's just a lot, right, so. Is it structured the right way? That's your job, to to bring us, to to let us know, is it structured the way that it should be? Efficiently, like, like Commissioner Caster, is it structured that we're running like a fine oil machine down the tracks? And then then and so, um I'm open to ideas, Greg, I mean, me personally, I am, cause you know, taking your advice, bringing it to us. Is it structured the way, in my opinion, from the outside, Matt's got too much going on, I mean, it's. Too much going on, he's a great young professional, but too much going on and and and. Do we, do we wanna, as quite the group, wanna set him up failure down the road, because we don't have. I mean, that's two big tasks, GPW and the parks, we all hear about the parks all the time, I don't hear about it much anymore, but. Are we setting somebody up for failure based on just load in general?
So you went from the community development director into this parks and engineering split, are you saying we should use the budget from the community development? To invest in a parks director?
I'm saying I want Greg to, you know, this is just me talking personally, I just want Greg to come back, if he thinks it sounds not structured the right way, like, bring it to us, you know, if he thinks that. You know, that the parks need some more uh TLC, we'll call it, from a leadership standpoint, you know, bring it to us and, you know, and. If we can't fill that community development decision, what's that gonna look like in a couple of weeks or 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 a month or six weeks, you know, cause we're getting ready to. Launch some things that are coming to uh budget remediation, so um again, it's one of those things where, you know, it it's gotta be your show, you know, and. We're all just, we're all just watching, so, but you gotta bring some stuff to us and and if, if you think it's structured fine the way it is now, that's great, I mean, I, but. I just think that, you know, workloads a lot, Matt's got a lot going on, just engineering department.
I think that uh the community development director position. Probably sounds like it's not gonna be able to be filled the way it's written right now, but we definitely need somebody. Who is going to lead the charge when it comes to the new light program that we're rolling out, so there has to be somebody. In charge there, so. That much of the position has to be taken care of. I agree. I guess from my, from my view, that's the most important element there, where you've got uh land use and you've got. Uh uh downtown development in there, um our economic development, I'm sorry, but the most. Important part of that is who's gonna oversee enforcement, and so. If we don't get the right person for the economic development director, then. We have, we definitely need to find the right fit to oversee the uh the light program.
Well, Commissioner, what's, what happened if you hire somebody and in six months they're gone, then what, then we're back to square, so I agree with you, like, you know, that's my point, it's like. You know, and then like, going back to the, I'll bounce around with it, going back to parks and then and and then engineering is like. I mean, we had Kristen Bauer and Justin Combs, two really good professionals running those departments back in the day. You know, and and so now we have the top dog that all dumped and has played in a cost-saving measure, well. Cost-saving measures always aren't aren't smart, you know, when it comes to that, those two big giant things that us seven elected officials hear about a lot, you know, when it comes to that, so. Um again, it's like, you know, if you think it's structured fine, that's fine, where is for you and what you think. The machine should run like and and and, but you gotta bring that to us, but this is something to think about, we, cause I'm more, I'm more focused on the blade. You know, you know, when it comes to who are we gonna have, who are we gonna hold accountable, seven of us, you know, if if. If something happens, it goes sideways, God forbid, or or so, and I know you want, we've talked privately, I I I know you wanna do other things and and. Stuff that you really enjoy doing that you just don't have time to, and then you don't have to tell me what you do, cause I know you do, so, um, those are my thoughts.
I don't, I personally feel like you have a vision, and so.
Well, I I mean, in terms of tonight's topic, we, you know, we funded that position, but. And and my preference would be to maintain that structure if we could do, but, you know, there does need to be a plan B, that's for sure. Only goes so long with current, I I mean, I can do it as long as you want me to do it, but like, uh, Commissioner Halt said, I've got. Things that I wish I could spend more time on, but, you know, I don't have as much time to spend this as I'd like and. You know, I view the, I view the. Focus that is not getting as much attention in community development differently. I I I view it more in terms of the, of the planning side, you know, we've got a. A master plan effort here that is really just the first step. For making a lot of ordinance-based changes after it's done and and other programs. And it's, you know, it is kind of languished and we've had to kick it in the butt. Uh with a consultant to keep it going as well as it is, I think you know we had to do the survey ourselves in-house. Uh because the consultant survey failed, got thirty-two responses, ended up getting over five hundred uh for ours, but. Uh you know, that, to me, that effort is not getting attention. It should and that has knock-on effects down the road for other things. Similarly, beginning of attention, but, you know, there's four functional areas to the community development department. Construction inspections, code enforcement, which includes rental housing and other forms of code enforcement generally, light. Effort is under that umbrella, economic development, which, you know, now farmed out. Mostly to run away now and planning and zoning. Uh you know, though, from my perspective, code enforcement and inspections. Mostly take care of themselves, you know, they come to me for guidance on on thorny issues, but. You know, they know what they're doing and they're out there doing it every day. You know, those other areas need more attention. From from my perspective.
So I have two questions, one is, are you saying that that you don't think that we need to hire somebody? To lead the charge on the light enforcement? And that, also, I guess, what I'm hearing is, I know that you. Put the community development director position out there again, I mean, do we have a date when we wanna say, okay? We're gonna, we're gonna change course here, so that we have an idea, this calendar rolls on, when we might look at making a change?
We uh, second bar first, we uh noticed at this time for forty-five days, I think. In those months, it would be about thirty days of that. The the resumes have been only trickling and we got, probably nineteen, the first time around. You know, like I told you all, I only be one of them qualified and. Was very interested in the position and would have been a a great fit, including in terms of his experience with. Code enforcement, but for whatever reason, we couldn't get him to come here and. I said he didn't articulate that reason, but my suspicion was that he lived in Brighton, he wanted, he lived in Brighton and he didn't wanna go. And that's just too far to commute, I mean, he he made a lot of noises during the interview about. Well, there are opportunities for remote work and, you know, flex, flex time and flexible schedules and those kind of things. We didn't say no, but, you know, truth be told, we don't have policies that promote that as much. Should and we'll wanna look at based on our experience with pandemic here. You know, but that, you know, to some degree, that experience, in fact, emboldened me because there there was a perfect candidate. We just didn't snag that one. All the others out there. Given enough time, now. Do I think so, we need somebody to lead that charge, I I think a piece of that, you know, code enforcement is going on, light. Mediation efforts are going on every day and you'll, you'll begin to see more and more of the results. We're getting eyes on rental properties and haven't had eyes on them in a long time, and that's gonna uh have an effect. What will need a lot of attention if we establish it, is if we put money aside. In a fund to utilize to deploy for light remediation. Say we take some part of our money from the property sales and put it, or having a fund like that and say. That would be available to do low-interest loans or scraping paints or new roofs that otherwise. You know, the thorny part of it on the residential side is that it's not the rental housing thing. You know, because you have people with means who will actually own those properties if you will hold them to account. The thorny part is the owner-occupied housing that has become in disrepair. And whether we, at the same time, all these cuts we've been referring to occur, we had a housing department back at that time. That did, that deployed these kinds of programs, we still have people coming in and paying off those mortgages to this day. That they got to make home improvements back in, at that time, through the city's housing department. And if we were to utilize our available funds for some, a program like that. That will take a lot of administration and somebody would need to be devoted to that effort on a, on a full-time basis.
I bet, did that happen before all the, the great depression?
It was right, as I understand it, obviously, I wasn't here, but uh as I understand it, that was caught. Right around the same time that the community development director.
Even going back to what Alan, Commissioner Halt really piqued my interest there when he brought up about, you know, just taking a look at like. You know, like letting us know, like, where you think there, there, there needs to be more help and like bringing up, you know, parks and engineering. Being all under our umbrella, and I know you and I had talked about all this grant money that's out there, but we can't get it because we don't have a parks plan. But that's something that we need somebody that can be more dedicated to that area, and he doesn't have that time, obviously. So, you know, that is something to consider, like, to bring to us, you know, because you did bring that up to me, that, you know, a parks plan, we have that, we have grant money to be improving. Our parks, like, we could be applying and getting quite a bit, but we just can't because we don't have that in place. So just something to think about, you know, after he brought that up, it made, it jogged my memory to a conversation that I had and. You know, just to think about that when it comes to that and maybe it's a part-time person or, you know, whatever it might be, but a position, but. To really consider, you know, and bringing those, you know, those, you are great at that, like, you're the one that brought that up, I didn't know about the parks plan and. You know, bring those things to us and so that we can work on that together.
But I do like Lance's comment about, you know, like, what's, what's the time, cause, cause you gotta think all seven of us are excited about this light plan, so what's? When are we gonna pull, when are we gonna pull the carpet into the rug and say, all right, now it's time, Plan B's gotta be going, we gotta be going on Plan B, cause like, we're all ready to jump. When it comes to this and once you have eyeballs, once the paper, once we throw some money at it, it's a, there there's gonna be accountability factor, then then and then you gotta talk with it. Somebody's gonna be held accountable for that because we're not gonna be the ones, you know, getting piled with emails, not seeing enough results, so. Um I think last question about the timeline of when, when to pull the plug on, you know, and 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 again, ideally, we'd like to have one, I mean, I, again, I think that. Your week, when your weekly report, you were spot on, and and I knew that, like I said, with the pay grade, I mean, it's, nobody's gonna move laterally. When they're, you know, let's say in Brighton, they probably, probably from there, you know, or or been there a long time, so um. It's gonna be a tough job to fill, so I I need to get a timeline on that and then and then find out what's the plan and then and then. Because again, I'm all about, I said it in the light meetings, you know, in October, you know, till we. Share it with our colleagues and somebody's gotta, we gotta be, City Commissioner's gotta look at somebody and say, all right, who's accountable for this? Now, if they go sideways, we're not getting results, who are we gonna hold, who who are we gonna hold accountable for?
I know that, I took my bicycle in to be repaired the other day, before the ticket was written up on my bicycle. I had been asked about three or four questions about light and and they wanted definite answers right then, so. Uh and they had mentioned certain addresses and things, so um. I felt like I had good answers for them at the time, but moving forward, people are talking.
They're excited, they're about to save all time, so.
Um just a real quick question, you mentioned Lenoway Now, how is that relationship working on our, we're getting the support that we need?
I I just ask, we're supposed to be focused on the budget.
These are budget items, these are, like, do we have, do we need to fund? You interrupted me.
I thought you were gonna, you're done. I just think, I wanna make sure that that this isn't outside the realm of what we're supposed to, what we have on our agenda. Not just all of this, that we're supposed to be. It's like, I guess if we all rephrase it within budget recommendations. Then it probably is, that that's my question.
Uh I guess if if you needed, if you felt like you needed. Another position in here that's not in here, that would, you know, through the, but that was revealed by this discussion, then that would be a question. I, right now, we have full-time community development director funded in this particular budget. Basically tell you what the exact, or near, more nearly exact that I can number that is with. Um wages and benefits, but it's, you know, around a hundred thousand. You know, so the implication would be that if if you don't think that money is well-staffed, then maybe the budget should be extended. Somewhere else, or if you think you need another position like that, then you find another hundred thousand. So in terms of the relationship with Lenoway Now, are they are there as a resource for us? Um we bring them in to meetings where that, where those kind of economic development program questions. Are going to arise and I I emphasize program questions because. You know, that's, that's, that's one piece of it, it's harder for me to see what they're doing. With the other pieces of it and they're always very happy to come and present to you, they can, they have in the past and they can do that again at the. At a pre-meeting, but there are other pieces to economic development in terms of retention visits and promotion. Um you know, that are not part of that, but what we bring them in on is if we have a project like. Not with the prospective purchasers for the, with mall property. We bring them in so that there's someone there that can talk about the programs that might be available to help with what they wanna do from all this.
Thank you. I have one more budget, budget related question.
Sure.
What do we get for a sixty thousand dollar chief's vehicle for the fire chief? This seems like a lot of money.
When we get to the chief, he'll uh tell you, I don't know what he has. When we get to the chief, he'll tell you. I don't know what he has.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
We're ready for a chief. We've got one.
Been a while.
Turn it over to you, Chief. Can you give us the high points of your budget request?
All right. Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all again. I will try not to squash the energy in the room with my. Not too much has changed. I've highlighted about a dozen areas that I'll put down. If you stop if you have any question. On the revenue side, I think I'm on page one.
Yes.
Separate printout here. I'll start with our SRO grant that was renewed with the high school again this year. Very happy with the service that we received and it seems to be working out for parties very well. We are going to continue with that. Moving down a few lines, live scan applicant fingerprinting. For this. You know, we're trying to learn from the pandemic. There's a lot of things that have come out and this is intertwined with a lot of subjects that were actually just discussed, including the, the D cuts that didn't recover from the Great Recession. One of those being our office staff. At one time we had six full-time people. We currently have two. So when someone comes in and they're requesting fingerprints for a job application or for. Purchase permit or some CPO permit, that takes that person and ties them up for about thirty minutes while they do that. So then if anyone's at the window, if anyone is outside or if the phone is ringing, then we don't have anyone attending to them. So what we did this year is in communication with the state, we're not going to submit those types of. Fingerprints any longer because they're available to have done other places. When we started, we were the only game in town. Now there's several. Sheriff's Department officer offers, there's a private business on Winter Street that offer, so we can refer that out. We will still do our arrest intensive force. We're applicant prints, things of that nature. But that is the reason that you'll see a zero in that space. We used to take in money for those transactions and on top of that, we would charge a five dollar fee or whatever. And then the rest of that money would get sent back to the state for that online transaction. So it wasn't a, a benefit to us. It was more of a hindrance to the, how the office spent their time. So. With the pandemic, we weren't able to do those things. We found out how much smoother things would go and we didn't have those constant interruptions. Not to mention, you know, those are fewer people that will be stamped in the lobby waiting just from a. Agentic standpoint, I guess is the word I'm looking for, concerns of that nature. We also had an issue with the state billing us in a timely manner. You may remember two years ago when we got a surprise bill for about fifteen thousand because. They transposed letters in our emails when they sent the bill and then that amount was racking up and they didn't realize no one was receiving it. And then all at once, they called us and we told them what our email was. We got this gigantic bill that was already into the next fiscal year. So. That is one more problem that we addressed by making this. Moving down, there's a couple lines here. Parking fines and toll and impound fees. You'll see those are reduced, but I expect those will bounce back. Largely due to COVID, we were limiting our contact with people who are making as many traffic stops as we normally would have been. So fewer cars were towed. Parking fines were driven largely by complaints. So we still did issue a number of those. One of the other things stemming from the pandemic is we usually had one of our two office people in, in the office at the time. So if the phone is ringing. They were not able to process those tickets and send them to the corporate collection. Like they changed the ordinance to allow. If you remember back in December. We had made it so that we would collect on more tickets and we haven't had the ability to enact that. We've had a few that we've been able to send in over time, but mostly they've been stacking up and we're gonna push those out here shortly. We'll see probably the more collection in that line item because of that. And then we hope to be more even. Whereas they come to, we'll send them out. The last item I had highlighted under revenue was the sale of equipment with the. Breakup of the motor vehicle pool and Nick's pending retirements. I'm hoping to get out of the used car business and have five unmarked cars. Currently, three of them are leases to Enterprise. We have two that are used cars that we maintain. Like to get rid of those used cars and lease some additional two cars. One for myself. I'd like to sell Terry. He owns this car and. I'm not keep rambling, extravagant. Just Nick tells me that it's starting to rust to the point it might be a problem underneath there, but. We, we tried to guess that amount. One, one of the others was a, it was a retired patrol vehicle and we removed the stickers and assigned to the detective. So if we can, well, I don't wanna jump around, but we'll get to, remind you when we get to that line. The lease amount comes out to about two hundred and fifty or three hundred dollars per fee. Two court escapes and one fusion that degrade. It started with a three-year lease. And our mileage, you know, everything we do is right, right here in the city. I mean, ninety-nine percent of it. So our mileage always stays low. I mean, we're using them every day, but the mileage is really low. So. Prior to switching motor vehicle pool, we renewed them for another three years. And then at the end of that, we have a number of options. Paid for, we sell it, they sell it. There's residual, we can buy it, we can turn it in for another. There's a lot of options. Are there any questions on the revenue side? Maybe time to expenditure. Now I put it at page five? Five hundred thirteen? Yep, okay. All right. So the commission had approved additional three patrol officers spots years ago.
Five of thirty-eight. It's in the second section, first nine pages of revenue and then it starts over again.
The second section, the second number.
So all those three spots, you know, we were talking, you, you were talking about the difficulties in hiring community development director and that's certainly not. The only area we have issues with that. So I have two vacancies currently. We did manage to steal someone, steal a corrections officer from prison. We have sponsored them through the academy. So they will be out in Maine and one of those spaces for us. We had our detective sergeant left to work for the prosecutor. So he's over there now. So that is, we, we did our internal promotions and now we have a space of the, the road level to start somewhere. So we'll be looking to fill that. Very difficult, very, very difficult to find. We qualify. Challenge there. You'll see the wage number there. The activity through six months is pretty low. That's, that's the reason. We're not paying all the people that we are. Moving down about five, five lines there to wages part-time. So we have two full-time office staff. We have one part-time person. It sounds like the fire department is looking to use. And she was absolutely integral during the pandemic, coming to help fill in when people were quarantining, when things were going on. So part of that is to move her from twenty hours up to about twenty, twenty-nine hours. Part of that is we were authorized for cadet positions. If you look in years eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty. You can see that it was around that forty-five thousand mark. That was the reason. And we had some student cadets in at that time. And I'm not, I'm not ruling out using them again, but it didn't necessarily work out the way we get planned. We had great students in here. We were trying to attract local youth to the department. And the two people we have working decided to go, you know, they wanted to get out of Lenoway. So it didn't work. We, we had helped to groom a student up through and then sponsor them in the academy and have them on the road course. It didn't quite work out that way. So we may be exploring a hybrid, hybrid there, but the, the part-time wages also go towards our processing. So those three positions would be what that money is spread out over. The reason I didn't ask for it in twenty twenty-one, that was a. But they were vacant at the time. We didn't have any cadets. I went through the budget cycle. We didn't have anything on our. I'll go two lines down from that overtime. I've asked for a slight increase there for that turnover. So I have right now, there are. Three people eligible for retirement. Two right now as we speak, one in, one in January. And then there's also. Word of someone who may be joining a federal agency. So we might have four vacancies during that time. And to get someone trained enough to speed takes a little bit. So in the meantime, I'm back filling those positions. It's costing some overtime. So trying to. Trying to plan down the road for that turnover to happen. That, that's the reason for the increase there. Yeah. You're largely unchanged. I'm gonna jump halfway down to uniforms.
Just before you do, just the. The sick and top time increase associated with the pending retirement?
Yes.
That one is.
Large chunk of that.
Okay, a hundred and sixteen thousand. Quite an increase, but that's micro.
Uniforms. I have asked for a slight increase there as well, also for turnover. So when we hire someone and we outfit them, it's about three thousand dollars. Pretty expensive. And we try to pick the right people and give them a kick of ass. Recycle what we can recycle. But everyone is different height, different size. So sometimes you can't. The live scan fingerprinting to down from that, that is the corresponding blank from the other side. So you can spend that same amount that we would take in. Jumping down to office equipment maintenance, there is still a number here because one of the capital, I just wanted to give you. Things we were able to accomplish last year, we did get a new cap here. So here are two capers. We have one upstairs and one down. One very, very old. We couldn't even come up with a year on that one if I'm mistaken. We know it was older than fifteen years, but we don't know if that could help. That one's been replaced. So I'm hoping that we don't need to spend that. But we do have another one. The other cap here, it's, it's older and we have it scheduled for years from now. We're hoping to get a little more life out of it. But that number is there, even though we hope. Moving down the vehicle lease line item. There's five blanks and then a number. That's, that's the lease cost right here for five weeks. Training number underneath that. That is the money that I used to send people to the academy. So if we have a good local student, someone who wants to be the police, but they can't afford to. Go to school full-time and pay their bills and work and do all those things, just like I couldn't do. We will pay their tuition. We pay a slight wage that's in our contract. And then when they come out, they sign an agreement, a repayment agreement for that cost. So the costs, the tuition cost to send one person to Wayne County Regional sixty-five hundred. So that's what we're paying right now for Mr. Boyer to be in that class and he'll be out.
He has to be with us a certain amount of time. If not, then?
Gotcha. Yes, sir. The, the payback agreement is structured at twenty percent a year. So after five years. The last item I had highlighted here was capital equipment. There's a lot of things combined into that. The rifles, one of the projects that we had discussed last year and all the pushing that's, that's in there. Our standard replacement on our five-year schedule for vehicles. There's two vehicles included in that. One Tahoe and one something else that we can afford. So that, the, the vehicles are ninety thousand, rifles are twenty-five. And then the remainder we had budgeted for office furniture, which will be the chairs at the workstation. So those are the expenses there that total that number. Any question? I would, I would also add that we do our evaluations twice a year as part of accreditation and we store them electronically. And when we went to decide the format we wanted to use, we looked at, we looked at Anarbor. Looked at a few other agencies that are escaping me right now, but we wound up using the city process because it is very well structured. There is a, there's a free evaluation where you rate yourself, then you meet your supervisors. There's excellent communication up and down the chain. We store them electronically and I believe we provide paper copies to HR, of course, there's.
Right. Chief, I know that we have discussed and approved. Some new software reported to, I see a big increase in IT support. And wasn't that something you could just upload from the site and go right through the system and have the reports? Well, I, I can't remember exactly what it is. I'm assuming that the ninety thousand dollars has something to do with it.
The, the big software purchase we have was called Power DMS.
Okay.
And it hosts a lot of our data. So, so the evaluations I just mentioned that is stored in Power DMS. It's a searchable database where we log all of our policy and protocol. And we also will be doing a press release here within the next week because there's a public side to that. So. You know, where someone wanted to see our use of force policy would have to come in. It asks me, I print it, hand it to them. They can go right to our website. They can navigate through all of our policy and it's all very. That's, that's, the purchase of that software was purely for accreditation and all.
Okay. So I see there's InfoTech Services. That have been running forty-five thousand dollars a year, fifty thousand dollars. And this year it's ninety thousand dollars. That's at the top of page six about. Six lines down, seven lines down. But what's the ninety there?
That's, well, but you power DMS with the user licenses. We have the city. I speak this week. We have silo for storage. We used to be able to document storage. The silo has gone away from that. We also did some upgrades in terms of, we have a similar screen to the one you have here. So that the cat dispatch is available on that. So any officer walking into the building can see where every other officer is at that time. So there's some hardware upgrades in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for Vince? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
You get the earliest night of any of us. Chief Massengill, are you actually here or are you only appearing by Zoom tonight?
Eric sends way in.
Okay. Welcome. So feel free to give us the highlights and. There's questions.
So in our budget this year on the revenue side. We're very hopeful that we get the SEBA grant that you approved us to apply for. So that's the. That's the first line item there that shows hopefully us getting that grant money to get the SEBA's purchased there. It's, it's time. They're definitely needed. So we're hoping that comes through. The next line item is the transport services, the ambulance transport services. So we're, that's always a guess. Of course, we'd like it to be zero. That means nobody needed an ambulance, but that's not realistic. So. We're guessing about eight hundred fifty thousand dollars for the, the revenue for that.
Chief, why the reduction on that one?
So the reduction is we were on track when we did the budget last year to do about nine hundred and twenty five thousand. But our our, since COVID hit, our transports actually decreased greatly. So it's starting to to go back up just because people weren't doing a lot outside and and just weren't as active. Everybody was in their home and and not doing anything. There were barely any car crashes, there were just people weren't doing anything.
Okay.
They weren't getting the transports that that we were. So our our call line was down to, we were on about six average transport a day. Now we're back up to about eight or nine, so it's getting back to a little bit more than normal.
Yep, okay, thank you.
So that's it for the the revenue. So the the first one that that really has a a big jump is the overtime.
Eric, what page, what page you got?
Oh, I don't know, I only have a.
I guess six of thirty. Seventeen on the on the packet.
Find it? Okay, very good. All right, so the overtime, that's just going by the kind of the current what we're running at. A lot of that is has been one for from COVID expenses. We had quite a few people off with COVID, hope that doesn't continue, but between that and right now, we have two open positions, so we're having to fill with overtime also for that. And then same as Chief Emmerich, once you bring somebody on, we have to train them, which costs overtime. We have to, and we can't just turn them loose and say, go for it, so. We're budgeting and preparing for that. That's the increase there.
Is the process still the same when it comes to they have to be with the city for a certain amount? Do we have to send like to a firefighter academy or some of that?
Normally, no, in the, I'm gonna say in the past twenty years, I've been here twenty years, and we've always hired firefighters, paramedics. We lately have been hiring firefighters that are trained already as firefighters. And they are in paramedic school. We do have one of our firefighters who's in paramedic school and we're paying for his schooling. He was one of our paid on call firefighters for nineteen years, I think, nineteen years. So he decided he wanted to do it full time, so we're paying for his paramedic class. And he has that same agreement as the police have, the five year agreement. So yes, that is part of the exchange when we pay for his, we're paying for his schooling. The sick comp wages, pretty good increase there. We do have one firefighter who's going to be eligible to retire this budget year. So that's figured into that. For that increase.
Same.
Chief, you have a pretty substantial increase on insurance, health insurance.
That I don't have any knowledge or belief. That would be a.
Nathan question.
Is that related to the additional position? No, because that's not, no, that's.
For me, because we have a lot more people on the plan, I'm just saying, that's a good point.
You had quite a few or a couple at least new hires at the end of, or recently, and they're they're all on like family plans.
Family plans and single plans, so.
We're budgeting that next year.
We had a couple of questions before you got here, chief, about what kind of vehicle you have in mind for the chief's vehicle. And then also what your goals are with respect to that.
Okay, so the part time clerical is we've been talking a lot about fire inspectors position. So in the past, so that would be if that position is added. Then, so we used to have the full time secretary, which then was transitioned over to the IT department. And then, so we don't have a anybody at the fire station secretary. So if we look at a adding a full time fire inspector, then we would need somebody to basically manage scheduling and the billing and and the the secretarial portion of that. I was looking at for that. The the other question. We were in a chief's vehicle. So the chief's vehicle is. So I presented this two about two years ago. There we go. There it is. So this is what I feel is optimal for the fire chief's vehicle. It's a so basically it's a pickup truck with the four doors because we can transport personnel and we also use it current one to go to conferences and that sort of thing. So basically, it's a pickup truck with a cap on it with the bottom picture. If you can see that, it's a slide out tray. So basically, that's where we put all the equipment. Turnout gear, fire extinguishers, SCBA, all the EMS supplies and equipment. And then also my idea is to push that stuff forward on a slide out tray. And then have the back of it so we can haul dirty hose, dirty SCBA equipment from the fire scene back to the station. Right now, we don't have anywhere good to put it all, it gets piled in the cab of the of the fire trucks, which is the worst place to put it because of the carcinogens and the cancer causing materials offgassing from the equipment. So this gets it in the back of a pickup truck completely isolated to where those aren't offgassing while we transport it back to the station. Oh, that's so this is Prospect Heights, Illinois, is where I sent out a kind of a survey to a listener of fire chiefs and said, what do you have for a for a vehicle? And that was what they had, or that's what they have. This was what they paid in two thousand nineteen, so a couple of years ago. So that's where I got the money for the the cost estimate from is four door pickup truck, a cap on the top. Put everything in it, lock it up, that's the biggest thing, protect and lock it up. And then lighting package graphics. You know, definitely don't need an airport radio, but I figured with, this is two years ago, cost probably gonna go up, it definitely didn't go down. So I figured sixty thousand was a a fairly decent estimate, so.
What happens to your silver?
What happens to it? I don't know. It's seventeen years old with a hundred and thousand miles on it. So I know it was bought, used, the city bought it, used a few years ago, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have one more question on your section.
Yep.
Retirement contribution up from three eighty to five fifty five. That one, Nathan, do you want to take that one?
So yes, just the just for the 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 defined benefit portion almost five hundred thousand. Rest of that is is people in the defined contribution, the employer.
But why so much more than previous year?
Well, like I said in the beginning, it's gone up again this year, yeah.
Yeah, and we did have a lot of retirements three years ago. And I don't know if that's figuring into that, if they figure by retirement or not, but we had a lot of retirements.
Eric, what's your plan with the motor vehicle pool being eliminated? What's your plan on your biggest finishers coming down the road when it comes to engines and rigs and ambulances and all that? You have a plan now or you're still working on?
Yeah, no, I actually have, and this is kind of tiny, and if anybody wants to see that, I've got a twenty five year plan on what it's gonna cost for a place every year for twenty five years. And I'm. Twenty five years for a last truck for replacement. And normally it's, well, it used to be, historically, ISO classification actually relied on that. So you're, when the ISO did the inspection, they actually used those numbers. I contacted, I said, is that the case? And they said, no, we haven't done that in a few years. But the problem is with the rolled salt and and just the winters we have, is the biggest problem with our trucks is the salt rusts the frame. Our oldest engine that we're looking to replace, the city mechanic, Nick, he does all the all the service on them. And he said, you got a few more years on this one, but you're gonna want to look at replacing it because of the because of the frame rust. We've had a lot of issues with the the motors, as you know, I've had to come back to you and ask for money to to fix the motors. We just put about twelve thousand dollars into our newest engine, in the motor of the newest engine. So I'm looking at some some options for that. My opinion, so ISO doesn't require the twenty years of more. There are, the manufacturers are starting to look at ways to prolong the life of the truck because they do cost so much. One is there, you can get galvanized frames where they'll like, and I don't understand, I'm not an expert in metal, but I guess they'll like dip the frames and galvanize it to prevent the rust for longer. Also, the the bodies of the trucks, some of them are starting to make them out of of poly plastic instead of metal. So things that we're gonna look at before we buy the new one. And there's things that are now starting to come up because of the problem with the motors. It's not just us, it's nationwide, is there's some manufacturer just now starting to put like generators on the trucks. The the hardest thing on them is them idling, is sitting idling, that's when it builds up the carbon and that sort of thing. And we don't, we don't drive it like an over the road trucker does that blows all the carbon out because they're on the road for hours. We drive around that, you know, the city and it builds up to where there's some of them actually putting either battery packs or generators on the trucks that while they're idling or or while they're sitting, they can keep the the emergency lights running and that sort of thing. It turns the motor off and it runs off the generator or runs off the lithium battery pack. So these are all things that we're looking at, just starting to explore it because we're still two years away. Two two budget years away from it, but and all the shows have been closed the last year. So we couldn't go look at the trucks and see what new's out there. So this is only by literature that we're that we're looking at. So that's our plan. My plan is hopefully to explore ways to extend the life of the trucks. You know, same with the ambulances, as you know, we didn't buy the the least expensive, but we bought the highest quality because we want to get that extended life out of it. We want to be able to remount the box on a new chassis and continue to use that and and end up saving money the next time is is the goal. So that's, like I said, I do have a plan for the next twenty five years. And I'm hoping to, now that, or hopefully soon, that the shows will start to be open, back up and and we'll be able to actually see what's out there and talk to some of the vendors and and figure out what we can do to get some vehicles that are gonna last. Because there's, I don't know if it's sustainable, but I've been told for the last few years, the bigger eight percent increase every year for fire trucks. So it doesn't take very long to double the price of a fire truck. So that that's, and and that's, that's definitely the case when we bought. So engine three will be our next to be replaced. And we spent three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars on that nineteen years ago. And now we're figuring six hundred and fifty thousand, double in twenty years.
Eric told so our ladder truck.
So ladder truck is twenty years old this year, twenty one year old, about two thousand. So normally, like I said, normally those are twenty five year trucks traditionally. Looking at two options for that, to replace that truck in four years, you're looking at about probably one point three million. You're looking about one point one to one point two million. I don't know if that's the best option because it's really a good truck. It does not have any of the diesel emission stuff on it. The motor itself is an old Detroit Diesel that will run for a while longer, I do believe. Probably a lot longer. So there are options to look at that, or another thing we're gonna do is look at refurbishing that truck. And we're basically, they go through it and they, you know, we get the ladder tested every year, right? We get the pump tested every year. So so the main parts of it, as long as the frame is not rusting out, right? And we don't use that truck as much as we do the engines. So as long as the frame's still good and and the guts of it are still good, then we're definitely look at refurbishing it. We refurbish it, we're looking at, and this is just a guesstimation, like I said, I haven't got any any strict prices, but probably two to three hundred thousand to go through and and you know, there's definitely stuff we'll need to fix because it's, it'll be twenty five years old. It's it's not brand new, but we can make it to where we can probably get another fifteen, maybe twenty years on it. Is what we're, is what we're thinking in hope.
That's great.
So, yeah, and and that's what we're looking at. So like I said, it's a, it's it's not a cheap thing to be in the business of paying the fire department. Vehicles just cost a lot of money. The equipment costs a lot of money.
I was looking for more, just an answer of you got a plan now, because you know, you got the SCBAs, that's continually granted. If you don't get the grant, then what?
Right.
You're gonna become those kids, I just want to make sure there's a plan in place. And you can hear Mark's money every year to pay for these, like kind of like bulldozer backer trucks that are half a million dollars and so on, so. Because it's different, and you know, the process is different.
Right.
So that's what I was asking you, and
Yep.
appreciate you explaining.
Yes, I've got it marked down by every five years and I've broken down by how much we need to put into the account every year to get there hopefully for the next twenty five years, and then it'll need to adjust over that twenty five years. At least we're looking ahead.
Thank you.
Yep. We're going down, continuing down unless anybody else has any questions. The next. It is, I believe, uniforms. So there's a big increase in uniforms and what we talked about during our department head budget meeting is our turnout gear, the ballistic vests. Talking to Chief Emmerich is that stuff isn't a capital expense, yet we always put in the capital expense a year, every year, and you always approve it every year. That's an operating expense, that's something that, so basically, we took it out of capital and just moved it into the operating where it if we all agree that it's more, it's an operating expense, it's not a capital expense. So that looks really out of whack, but in turn, it was just taking it and moving the money to where it probably should have been. That's why that one got a whack. Other than that, anything else? When you get down to the capital equipment, then that does have figured in the the chief's vehicle, the what else is figured in that?
Some of engine.
Yep, half the engine replacement, the SCBAs and then concrete driveway repairs. And the lease that you approved, what two meetings, I think, for the heart monitor. We'll have next year's payment and then the year after, and that would be.
The the billing space cost allegation, that went up.
Yes. Yeah, the billing space cost, that's the garage doors, correct?
Yeah, that's your regular contribution, plus you have that capital, yeah.
So that's the capital expense, so the garage doors are original from nineteen eighty six, I think. We replaced three with money we had left over from replacing the exterior doors. So this is replace that big jump besides the normal is to replace the other seven garage doors and openers that are original from one station. Strong air wear here.
I would like to propose we have a bathroom break before we move to.
I would make, you need to vote.
Five minute bathroom break, everyone, how's that sound?
Well, there's only two bathrooms, so I might take ten. Going twos.
Brad, you're having too much fun.
Yeah, man. Just an extension of my day. I just wrapped mine up, so I mean.
Me too. I got my second COVID shot Friday, I thought I was gonna die on Saturday.
Yeah, I've heard that.
It was, I couldn't imagine it being having COVID and having any work, I literally, I mean, I only lasted twenty four hours.
It was twenty four hours, right?
I was so sick. I slept for fifteen hours.
Did you really?
Yep. Yep. Didn't want to eat, didn't want to do anything except keep my eyes closed and sleep.
But the twenty four hours is done.
Yep.
Yeah.
A little bit of a headache lingering and a little fatigue, but not nothing like it was on Saturday, Saturday was terrible. And Joanne was, she was sick too, but not as bad as I was. My ninety four year old stepfather, he had those shots, neither one of them bothered him, not not nothing, same same vaccine, the Moderna. Didn't bother him at all.
Yeah, I see.
I'll go back to saying, back when Baron was mayor, we used to get meal. Mayor.
What?
Back when Baron was mayor, we used to get fed during budget meetings.
I think actually it was back when Shane was administrator, because we had pizza one night, we had host calls, they'd email out a menu, yes, yes.
Sorry, hey, don't.
Those were the days.
We already signed these before, there was a issue with it, so we had, Michelle redid them. And I'm going to, so please sign them before you leave today, thank you. And then I'm going to take them to them tomorrow, I told both of them I was bringing them tomorrow.
Okay, this is for the fire and.
Yes.
Law enforcement service.
Correct. Thank you.
Yep, so it can.
They played last night or when they, oh.
Oh.
Oh, I forget now. Oh, they're gone. I was.
The big, I mean, the big tent was late in the day.
I don't have that on my mind, I like to be open when I can, you know.
My bracket is how Zags against the big tent, it's not looking.
Yeah, a little bit, a little bit.
Not looking good.
Yeah, you know, I don't know why I'm the pilot, it's a zag, I don't have.
I think that they with COVID, they just did not know how to to see these teams because it. It, I just don't, can't believe it's been this big of a Cinderella year.
I'm telling you, the fans of the United States is weird.
It's different years, watch.
Yeah.
So I didn't realize.
Sorry, my brain, sorry, I was literally one of these things where everything I said, like, that processing and I said, this is a creative budget. So I got to my, yeah, boy, I don't know what you are, I clearly do, but I just. I like stared at you like, help, I don't know. I was just like, I can't see my brain, I don't want to worry. What's the word, I can't find it. I messed up several things. We have everyone back, so we're ready to go, so take it away, Greg.
Next up is our Director of Parks and Engineering Services, Matt Promiszewski, who's appearing by way of Zoom tonight. Matt, are you there? There he is. There he is, I think, your your head is like as big as this table. Thank you, thank you. Feel free to go through the highlights of your budget request and then be prepared to quit.
Sure, yeah, so I know you guys have a lot of questions for my department. We're going to start with the revenues, feel free to stop me at any time. Revenues this year, there's really not too much changing, which is kind of a good thing, we were expecting quite a hit in our. Act fifty one money, which is what the state gives us for gas tax and looking at our street funds. We only lost a couple thousand dollars, so which is huge. So that's good, other than that, there's really nothing different as far as the revenue side of things go. So on to the expenditures, we're starting with the cemetery. There's this, again, there's not too much crazy going on, but I'm just going to run through kind of the the larger expenditures that we have planned for this year. You will see a a big increase in a lot of my departments with gas luben antifreeze and. Fleet insurance and admin costs and that's due to the fact of the motor vehicle pool. We, this is going to be the new way that we budget for that that system, since the motor vehicle pool has dissolved. And then we're also still planning to get a mower for for the cemetery. And we're also going to look to take some money out of fee and use it for the road out at the cemetery for improvements to the asphalt. Moving down to Department of Public Works. There's a big increase for wages there, we're we're going to change up the way we, well, we're posing to change up the way. That we charge our our foreman's cost, right now he keeps track of every hour that he spends. And charges it to a corresponding department. I I've looked at trying to budget him, so he's fifty percent major street, well, I think it's twenty percent major street, twenty percent local street. Fifty percent general fund and then a couple thousand from each other. Department that he works with, so that that's why the increase is there and certainly we can always. Up the percentages in other departments i- if we feel the need that if that's too high for public works wages. Can you guys see me all right? I know this is a little, okay, perfect. Continuing on down in in public works, we do have money in for capital improvements, that's ten thousand dollars for scale maintenance. Our scale just needs some TLC this year, this is the scale that we use for measuring salt out, measuring stone tonnage for our projects. Stuff like that, so we're just going to put some money into that this year. And we also have. Equipment in there which includes a loader. Includes a loader and a salt truck. One of our salt trucks is kind of getting to that point where it's about time to replace it before we start getting some some bigger issues involved. So we're looking at replacing the salt truck and the loader that we have now currently has, it's in closing in on twenty thousand hours, which is quite a bit for a piece of equipment like that. So we're looking to upgrade that as well, so one thing that would be in the revenues is are the sale of both of those pieces of equipment. And I think we are estimating roughly about forty thousand. Here's the new cost for motor vehicle pool and four four three, so we still have to somehow distribute the funds and this is the account that it's going to be going through now. And then moving down into engineering. A lot of our wages are funded by other other accounts, we get mostly paid for out of major and local street funding. So there's not too much of a cost in for engineering, again, we get paid out of major and local street and. Building maintenance and solid waste and other funds. Street lighting, we bumped up contract services in hopes to. Update some more lights throughout the year, again, this is part of our our job or our goal to go to more LED. And so every light that we replace in town is usually about a thousand dollars and we're going to try and get on a a plan to. To replace all the streetlights on the street that we. Paved that year, that way they have a brand new street, brand new streetlights and we don't have to worry about that and it'll be upgraded to LED. Which will also save the city some 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 cost in the end. This does, that that street lighting does not have anything to do with our downtown streetlights, for the record. Moving down to the recreation department, not too much of a change here, this is where we we pay for the services of the Y and. And the school for use of bone pool and for the rec department that the school is is putting on for us. This is where the cost come from here and also the P O D centers in here as well. Parks and Forest Department, here's a a big change, when we were sitting talking about budget with Nathan and Greg. We we decided that it might be best to group. Parks and Forest Street Department with Heritage Park, at one point there were, there were two separate departments, we don't see the need for that anymore. We were actually not quite sure why that was set in place that way to begin with, but we are looking to combine both departments, so. You will see some some increases in wages and other other line items due to the fact that it is now Heritage Park and all the other parks rather than all the parks and Heritage Park separately. So moving down into the capital of Parks Department, we've got playground surfacing, that's something we we like to do every year is replace the mulch around the playgrounds. Sometimes that gets. Picked up from storms and floods or just kicked out from kids, so we try to replenish that every year when necessary. We also have smaller equipment that just goes to purchase any equipment that breaks down throughout the year that we might need. Site furnishings, trash cans, benches, picnic tables, anything throughout our parks. Payment equipment we have, that's for if any part of the playground. Is in disrepair and needs replaced or fixed, that's what that money goes to. Softball irrigation is, this is field four of four at Heritage Park. And that would be to completely have all four parks irrigated, all four fields, sorry. And then the other thing on there. Was, so what was taken out was Heritage Park Christmas lights and decorations for ten thousand, I think it was Alan, you you asked about that earlier. We still plan to do to hold that event, this is just, we're not looking at getting. Some new equipment this year, we would just take everything that we have and and. Put out there the what we usually do, no new equipment would be added. We also, it looks like it was it was taken out for the softball softball complex upgrades for seventy five thousand. At one point, I think it was a couple of years ago, we met with a couple of you discussing. Our vision for Heritage Park and what we would like to see and one thing was a a softball complex upgrade, so we would be. Regrading it, putting some safety netting up, really putting some money into the concessions and the. The restrooms out there, kind of that whole area would get a kind of a facelift for safety and aesthetic purposes. But that was removed. And then the other thing that I'm. Looking for that I don't see is the Heritage Park Road.
It's in the sea.
Thank you for reminding me, yes, all right, so we'll get to that. So moving on to the major street funding. We've got contract services for a hundred thousand, this is for any design work, any random work that we can't do in house that might need to be sent out for bid. Would come out of this this funding here, there's also the same number in local street services, so. Is if there's anything that we can't do in house, we would pay for it out of this account. I I certainly hope not to spend a hundred thousand dollars, but there are some things that that we are not able to handle in house. Some larger design works and stuff of that nature. Um some larger design works and uh stuff of that nature. Um and then I also have a hundred and fifty thousand for um resurfacing, uh and this money is for. Chip and fog seal, micro surfacing, ultra-thin overlays, this is to, this is our preventative maintenance money that. We're, we're gonna try and push more towards um preventative maintenance rather than the, the retroactive approach. Next year, um we are proposing to do Michigan Ave from Charles Domain. Um that is a grant through the state that they will be giving us roughly seven hundred thousand dollars. Um and we would be responsible for the rest, um so that one point two million dollars, we would pay upfront. And then M dot will reimburse us uh about, about seven hundred thousand dollars uh over the next two years. Uh Greenly, Mommy to River, this is, this isn't part of a, a larger project. Um this would include Saint Joseph Company, Greenly River, Summer and Cherry. Kind of that whole section right there would all be um base stabilized uh to, to. Secure the base and prevent um and, and place new asphalt on top to prevent um moisture the underneath and ruin that base. Um so you'll be seeing the other ones in uh local street match or local street funding. Moving along, a lot of these are all, all expenditures that we do every year, um normal maintenance for streets. Um if there's anything you guys see in there that jumps out at you, please let me know, um but that's routine maintenance, um stormwater, bridges. Traffic service maintenance. Winter maintenance. And then we also have state route that we maintain throughout the year as well, that the, the state reimburses us for. So moving into the local street side, which is two or three. We've got contract services, this is the, the same thing that I, I mentioned before in major street account. Um this is for anything that we might not be able to handle in-house, um such as design work and whatnot, um so there is some money there. I do, do have the seventy-five thousand dollars for preventative maintenance, again, that's chip and fog. And that's ultra-thin overlays and that's micro surface. Next is Saint Joseph and Company and River, again, this is all part of that larger project that I mentioned earlier with Summer and Cherry. Um and again, we have the same, same funds as we had in the major street, which is all routine uh maintenance. For streets, stormwater, uh signals, um and winter maintenance as well. Moving on to the estate. Um we're gonna drop down into capital projects. Uh we have the road maintenance for Heritage, um again, when we, when we met out there. Um a couple years ago and talked about our vision for Heritage Park, uh we mentioned having a good road that people can use and, and not. Buster rim on it, so that three hundred thousand dollars will um. Will most likely get us a, a paved road in the main loop. So starting from North Adrian Drive, back to the, the farmhouse and then back all the way to Heritage. Uh to the Stubborn Center and then back up, that will give us a um a stabilized base with a. Uh two inch pavement course. Um and then there's also fifty thousand dollars for the cemetery that I mentioned, um and also fifty thousand dollars for. Uh the uh Quanis Trail Authority that is the City of Adrian's contribution. Which that one is not listed in here and I will, I will get with uh Nathan Owen and we'll get that in there. Moving on to um Auto Parking Fund, not much of a difference here, um everything's pretty much the same. Uh just routine maintenance, uh nothing really to worry about unless anything jumps out at you guys. And solid waste, again, nothing too crazy. Um it did go down a little bit this year, which is good, we're finally getting a little bit of savings in our account. I, I mentioned to you guys a little bit, a couple months ago, um that we're looking to, well, we have to bid out the trash contract. Uh in uh next year, um so it is up June twenty twenty-two. Um and that's when we're gonna be putting out the whole contract as a whole, right now it's kind of separated into a bunch of different. Um different chunk, chunks, so we've got downtown, we've got recycling, we've got the city as a whole trash collection. We've got a whole bunch of different things that we're all gonna try and group together and put into one contract. Um I think that will drive down the costs, um but I know we're looking to also do um spring cleanup from time to time. Um and if we wanna look at using totes rather than trash bags, um we're gonna be putting out a survey. Probably in the next, well, probably six months from now, um that will ask all the residents what they would like to see. And then we'll bring that report to you guys, um but right now it looks like we are generating some, some savings. Um into our. Into our solid waste fund. Um and then the last thing I have is City Hall or is Building Maintenance Fund, uh and this is just what it costs to. To own each of those buildings, to have janitorial services in each of those ready buildings, to pay the utilities on all those buildings. Uh so this is the total, total cost for us, uh each, each department. Um and then we charge that out um to the departments as well, just to, to recover that. And all the capital improvements are included in these funds. So I know that was really quick, um and I know you guys have a lot of questions for me, so feel free to. To carry on.
With the unfunded items under parks, are any of those able to be used? Um is the fee estate able to use that or oil and gas? Funds able to be used for any of those?
Uh fee estate funds for not funded, um the only thing that it might be able to use, be, be used for is Heritage Park Christmas lights and decorations. Uh the other things, it does not, uh it will not fund those because those are recreational, um for recreational purposes. Um and we are not allowed to spend uh fee estate funds on recreational. Purchases. I'm sorry, what was that?
Oil trust might be an option, however.
Yes, yep, if, if you guys choose to do that, go that route, um oil trust would serve for, um I believe pickleball courts. Softball complex upgrades. And maybe that would be it. Uh but I, I believe you guys.
Most we made that splash pad is under consideration as well.
Oh, and the splash pad, yeah.
So we've got, we've got, we're not talking oil trust right now, it's, I mean, we don't need. It's getting more return in the market right now than what we're getting in our savings account, so it makes no sense to pull it all up on the book. I wanna go back to last, I must have missed this, so we spent sixty-five thousand dollars on a bridge on Navy Road, a few money last year.
Uh we, we have not actually spent that yet, this is, this is the uh bridge on Quanis Trail. The abutments of the bridge are failing because they're used, they are used railroad ties which deteriorate over time. Um so the plan is to remove those railroad ties and then put in two concrete retaining walls. But in the future, we won't have to um account for projects like that on Quanis Trail. Uh because we have the partnership of the Quanis Regional Trail Authority.
The way the, 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 our obligation for the trail authority works is, is Matt mentioned, we put in fifty thousand dollars. The other partners. Adrian Township twelve five, Matt, is that right? Not, not everybody puts in fifty.
No, in total.
Yeah, so Raisin and Adrian Township twelve five and County City, also fifty, is that right, man, am I remembering that right?
Nope, uh, come see, put in twenty-five and uh Quanis put in.
I just wanna make sure we're not spending a few money out of the jurisdictions, I don't know if that's legal or not, I don't think we right had an official opinion, so I found the commission that. Where can we spend that money, like when it comes to out of our jurisdiction, so that's what caught my eye, I, I mean, I must have missed it last year.
In Heritage Park is technically none in our jurisdiction either, but.
The city owns it though.
Property the city owns and.
Right.
The trail currently is also property the city owns, however, in the future, it may not, it may be owned by.
So we want pickleball courts, I think, right, or are we talking about that now, let's, let's, let's put on the table, let's.
Uh well, I think, I think the minister already said he's gonna work up the numbers, right?
Well, there, we, we gave you a number there, which is for four.
Okay.
So, there is a question, how, how many, I, it, you know, two would be not quite half that number. That's the number for four, uh as Matt has estimated it.
And then the number for splash pad.
Splash pad as well, now, Matt, Matt, you wanna talk a little bit about the operations of splash pad, well, since we're on that.
Sure, uh so I, I was in contact with Tecumseh who put in a splash pad years ago. Um and they have gotten tremendous use out of their splash pad, um they do say that is, it is kind of a maintenance nightmare from time to time. Um they, so annually they spend about six thousand dollars in water, um and also. Um a thousand dollars in just uh random maintenance throughout the year, repainting it, um putting out. Um or, or cleaning it, uh we, we will have to clean it quite regularly so the bacteria doesn't clean up. Um and again, this would just be taking uh more time from our current staff to focus on this, the splash pad. Um but it. The, I don't know if, if you guys are familiar with Tecumseh Splash Pad, there, i- it's a forty foot diameter circle. With about three um, three features, three water features, um I don't know, and, and that cost a hundred thousand dollars. Um I don't know how extravagant you guys are looking, I think it is, um like, like the mayor mentioned earlier. It would be a great partnership if we could do it with Habitat and Deangelo, um but I don't. I, I don't know that we have the funding um and the, the labor staff to take care of it at this current point.
Well, in my opinion, we don't have the labor or anything to do with the pickleball court. If we're gonna keep throwing things over to the west side, we need to do something for the people on the east side that haven't had anything done in twenty years. So I don't, you know, I don't care, the money is there now, it's available and we need to do it. If you need personnel to talk to the city administrator and you need to figure out what you need to support this thing. But just say, well, we can't do it and we can't do it now. I'm not buying it, Matt, I'm just not buying it. Rather than figuring out a way why we can't do it, let's find out a way to do it.
Matt, the, the thing that Jennifer said, me and Deangelo back in November. Um I, I'm just rereading to this email, um she was saying like a pre-designs uh pad. She, she was actually saying to avoid a lot of the overhead things, because she said that's where it is a maintenance nightmare, you have a lot of problems. So like, a lot of what she was saying is it's just basically um coming out of the ground. So like, there, there's a lot of like the water just coming out of the ground onto that surface. And she, she really suggested going lower on the, so what she said is. She says the savings you get with an in-ground flush mount spray head versus a large above-ground features is pretty substantial. And so like, the, the quote she had given us was a hundred and thirty-five thousand, just to have a few above-ground things. It already jumped to a hundred and seventy and that's not even on maintenance on it, that would, and she said that it can be where a lot of the problems are. So I, I do know that and I mean, I mean, this is something we could explore more with Jennifer, but um, I don't know. But I'm just throwing that out there as well, that she was kind of discouraging, I mean, she was discouraging, she wasn't kind of. She was really discouraging us from doing too many overhead, because she's like overhead splash features, because she said that's where it is a maintenance issue. And they're, they have more problems.
Okay.
But just something to consider.
Yeah, absolutely.
Matt, have you had any conversation with them at the center about their pad? They have, they have pretty nice facilities there and uh their equipment is also much newer than what Tecumseh has. So it might be worth talking to.
I will certainly do that, thank you, Matt.
I do think it's something that we can get behind if you can get some figures. And what, what the actual cost will be and the size and um what you think the make yearly maintenance will be. I understand your staffing issues and, and I agree with, with what I think said, you know. If, if we're really going to be adding amenities and amenities, do we need to add staff to take care of those amenities?
I think that's what you're saying, Matt, is if you're talking about adding active recreation amenities, really need another staff person.
Yeah, and, and as you guys are aware, we, we had a whole recreation department and with that recreation department came with. An, an additional ten employees that took care of that recreation department. Um and as we, as we slowly start to grow more and more recreation, which is tremendous. Um it just, we just need to make sure that we have that balance of staff power to man, to make. Good programs for, or good, good investments for the city, um the residents. Um I just wanna make sure that we don't bury ourselves in a hole and in, in ten years, we have. Um something that we just spent a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, dollars in the splash pad that we can't maintain because we just, we can't be everywhere at once. So just something to keep in mind that as we add more and more, I, I will be probably coming to you guys asking for more and more.
And that's, that's to be expected, like I said, we can't have all of these things and I think we're smart enough to understand. That we can't have all of these things if we're not willing to support her. But I think our citizens deserve to have the best programs that they can and the best facilities. And if that means adding a person here and there, we should do that. We've all talked about the fact that right now, we've got money that we didn't have three or four or five years ago when we talked about doing these things. Now we've got it, I think our taxpayers have a reasonable expectation that we're gonna use the money that they've been giving to her.
So it was back to what we talked about in the beginning, it's like, is it structurally the way it should be structured, do we have enough staff? Like, you know, is it, you know, back in two thousand eight, we cut forty-five employees, you know, we've only hired probably what, ten back maybe, if that? So still, we're still out of whack for a city of our size when it comes to personnel, like, I'm not a big fan of adding personnel because you have legacy costs, pension, healthcare. But, but I think what Richard Goss is going as, it's time to strike now, it's time to make some decisions when it comes to what we want off our citizens and what we don't, you know? And, and then recreation opportunities, I mean, that's, that's a quality life, I think that's what gives people to wanna live here and, 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 and so. We need, we need to make some decisions here, when you, uh, with, with how much we're gonna be able to fund, and Matt's absolutely right, I mean, it, it takes mad hours to. And, 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 and so, we need, we need to make some decisions here, when, you know, with how much we're gonna be able to fund, and Matt's absolutely right, I mean, it takes mad hours to, to, you know, you know, the funnest, but I get Gordon's position, it's like, it's like, hey, I was like, let's, let's talk about some, some, what we need to do to keep the umbrella whole, and if there's anything you need, let's fill those holes, you know, so.
And to piggyback off that, like I already had said earlier, just the fact that if we can have somebody that can put a parks plan together for us, and there's grant money out there, there's free money out there that we could be improving our parks, that's, you know, that's a very valuable resource right there, even if somebody that can come in and fill that position.
Yeah.
Get that.
It's like, we did a dog park last year, that's a great, beautiful dog park, I mean, I'm really impressed with how it turned out. It's like, I am with Gordon, like, let's get something over there, let's put something brick and border that people see that, listen to, you think you were disenfranchised, we're gonna, we're gonna show you differently.
Yeah.
You know, and so, I mean, we don't, I mean, our job is to present a vision, right, and, and, you know, Greg carries it out, that's what it is, so I mean, but we also have to give you tools and toolbox to need to fulfill that, and so, that's where the balance is.
Well, and Commissioner Roberts, back when we talked about chickens, she voted, not with the majority, but she said she felt it was her responsibility to represent all of the citizens of the city. And I think we all feel that way, we just have to prove it from time to time, so, you know, I, I don't doubt anybody's commitment to doing that. I, I just wanna see it happen.
I think if we wanna move forward with those two items, and it sounds like we do, then we should plug in a full-time person in parks as well, to help Matt with the maintenance of those, because they're, they scramble even now, to get all the things that that crew was asked to do. That should be part of the funding formula.
Where the parks were when I first got elected, that's all I heard about, the parks and like, and then where, I don't hear about the parks anymore, I don't hear the complaints. I got business that there's three hundred and fifty people that go through those doors every day, there's five hundred through that doors, and I don't hear it anymore, so. But, let's, let's start striking, I mean, that's, that's what I feel. And I'm not even talking about next year, I mean, we can do it, we can do it.
Let's do it now.
This year. I mean, you know, I mean, the budget can be, Matt's budget is bad, but I'm talking about, like, let's, this is, we're talking about money, let's talk about, we can pull out a fund balance and then twenty twenty budget and get this stuff done. He can keep his budget the same, that's fine, you know, but outside of the personnel that we have to, because there's other costs adding up to that, but I'm not saying they make Matt hold on his budget, we have to do some, leave that alone, add personnel, that's what we all wanna decide, and then pull out a general fund, or fund balance, sorry.
Do we have somebody qualified that can do the parks plan like now, or is that something that we would have to hire that person in with, in this position? That's, I guess, my question.
I did the city of South Beach parks plan.
What's it, what's it to me?
No, but that's why, I'm just.
They're not hard to do, they're very formularic, it's just really busy, we're compiling the information and then some graphics work that you arm out, so.
The staff that we're talking about is a laborer more than an administrator at this point.
Yeah, the, the, the full-time person I'm talking about is somebody that's field person, but.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's what I'm asking, could we relieve somebody of stuff they're doing right now that's more labor intensive, so that they could work on this? That's what I was asking, like, could, could we delegate that a little differently?
Can we get a college in for them?
The, the trick about parks plans is really in doing your facilities inventory and budget, that are included in that, but, and then, as I say, there kind of is a bit of a graphics piece in terms of presentation, but it's really just, more than anything, it's just information to gather. There's public engagement piece as well, I mean, we just did that for the master plan, I mean, I think we have the resources in-house that we can do it in-house. They're not, they're not that hard to do, but, just, you know, just time, you know. We gotta community development director, you know, that same skill set, it tends to be, you know, I did it because I was a planner, and that's what planners often do, both those plans. With support from the staff in the Parks and Recreation Department, and it's, it's a little harder if you have recreation, it's easier if you don't have a lot of recreation. You know, I think, they're, they're due every year by February twenty eighth, they must be filed, and if they're filed by that deadline, then you're good for five years, a five-year life. Grant eligible if you have a, I'm confident that we can, we can get it done.
That's why I was bringing it up right now, because I knew you had told me that that deadline, when it was, so I thought this was a good time to bring that in, but I don't wanna put more on somebody's plate than, you know, unless we can really demo something else possibly, so, that's what I'm asking.
And if nothing else, I mean, that, that's something consultants. Don't have the staff up, so it's once every five years.
I just don't like to turn my eye on free money when it comes to parks, I really want.
Well, then, when you have your plan, identifying those grant opportunities and writing the grant apps, that, you know, that is an ongoing, that is an ongoing project.
Sorry, well, no money left.
Anything more for Matt? You got off pretty easy there.
Thanks, Matt.
For all those dollar sales, we're not wanting to quit.
Thanks for getting off your day off.
Yeah, no problem, thanks, guys, again, if you guys have any other questions or concerns as you're going through the budget, please give me a call, reach out to me, send me an email or text, whatever you guys need.
Thank you.
And Matt, I just sent you an email with that, that last proposal, in case you don't have that, but she sent the splash pads, at least you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, well, last but not least.
Thank you.
How are you feeling?
Well, my funds are both sewer and water, so it's five ninety, five ninety-one, but I've got a little handout to kind of summarize stuff. Obviously, like Matt said, I've got dozens and dozens, dozens of line items, most of them don't change very much, so I just put together like a summary. On the front page, about, we'll talk expenditures on the sewer fund.
No. Yes, fifty, give me that one back. No, we're good.
Okay.
I was just plugging them.
So one of the things, what I did on this, was I, I was comparing the fiscal year twenty twenty-one adoption budget with what the proposed budget is for twenty one twenty-two. And on the sewer fund, I divided it into the main categories, so for example, the wastewater treatment plant, the lift stations, and I compared the costs and showed the difference between the two different budget years. And on some of these items, I actually tried to, to pick out the main ones that were causing that difference in, in the cost. So for example, wastewater plant, I'm seeing, you know, less than a one percent increase in expenditures, that's, you know, a very small amount. On the sanitary sewer, this is the department that goes out making it, you know, like, yeah, a very small increase, every line item in there probably went up or down a little bit in the actual budget. So if you see anything as you're looking through the overall budget, and wanna ask me about it, feel free to do so anytime. Admin and overhead portion of the budget is showing a fairly significant increase of about a hundred and forty thousand, and the two main components of that is a, about a eighty thousand dollar increase of potential contribution. But I would point out that that's over the entire sewer fund, so that counts the wastewater employees as well, it's not just administrative personnel for, I'll mention. And then about a sixty-nine thousand dollar increase in the admin accounting for water. So what that is, is basically, a lot of the items that we do get charged to water, and this kind of back charge is into sewer. So for example, my wages, the office manager wages and benefits, meter reader wages and benefits, all get charged to the water side, but I take half of it and back charge it to the sewer, because it should be split them up. And there's other items in that formula too, such as postage and office supplies and things like that, get paid from water, but I back it off, half of it is charged to the sewer. And then on capital projects, last year, if you recall, we kind of did a freeze on our budget, we didn't do any rate increases. So we did have a whole lot of capital, capital projects in last year's budget. This year, it's increased about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and about half of that, a little more than half of that, is dedicated to sewer lining projects, rehabilitation projects. My plan is to combine this year's money with next year's money to do a very large project, similar to what we did in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, I think it was, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, where we did another, a larger project. And then the fixed expenses increased by about two hundred and thirty thousand, but that is really the, the JCI project that we're going through right now. There's a hundred and sixty-two thousand, sixty-four thousand dollars of that project is on the sewer side, and this is the last year of our backer lease payment. The backer payment is usually fifty-seven thousand, this is the balloon payment for that, so that's a hundred and sixty-two thousand, so, a hundred thousand dollar extra payment to get that backer paid off. So those are the main big items on the sewer fund, showing an increase or why there's such a difference. Again, all the little items, every line item probably changed some degree. On the water side, similar setup here, the water plant is showing a fairly significant increase in expenditures, and fifty thousand of that is gonna be dedicated to helping clean away, clean out some of that lime out of the back line lagoon. So every year, we clean out the front, the front lagoon has fifteen thousand cubic yards, okay? The back lagoon holds twice that, holds about thirty thousand cubic yards. There is a period of about eight to ten years where it wasn't even touched. So, so what happens is when the front lagoon gets full, we have to switch the lime sludge to go to the back, and it pumps to the back until we can get the front cleaned out, and it gets cleaned out in the fall, late summer, early fall, then we can switch it back. So over the last three or four years, we've been trying to dedicate a little bit of money to start getting, making some room in the back, because if we run out of room in the back, I don't know what we're gonna do, I mean, everybody's getting their teeth puffed out or something, because we're gonna find, need to find a place for that line. So my hope is to put a big dent in the back, back lagoon this year, to the tune of about fifty thousand dollars, and that'll probably still only get a quarter of it out. If, if we're lucky. And then I'm budgeting about twenty thousand dollar increase of capital costs, just to be safe. That's the, one of the largest expenses that we, at the larger plant, especially the line. Transmission and distribution, this is, this is the crew that works out on the, on the water mains. I am asking to add one additional O and M operator three position, it will be a union position, and this will help us kind of round out some crews, so we actually have enough people to form more than one crew. You know, you can't fix a main break with less than three people safely, you just can't do it. And on the days when we have four main breaks at once, it's hard to pull somebody off of one and go to the other one. So that's why it oftentimes takes us a couple of days to not go there, but I'd like to add one more person to the O and M department. And then just twenty thousand dollars in additional operating supplies, and twenty thousand dollars in consultant fees. The last time the city did any kind of hydro flow testing, where they actually measured fire flow, was in nineteen ninety-two. So I'd like to start doing that a little bit more. Typically, when a new development comes in, they need to have a fire flow test done, they pay to do it, a third party will come and do that, and that's just on an individual hybrid basis. I would like to get a better understanding of where our whole system stands, because then we can update our water model, just get a better picture. So I'm hoping to kind of do a little bit more of that this coming year. Admin overhead increase seventy-one thousand, again, big comfort there is the increase in the potential contribution, and again, that's over the entire water front, we did a water plant and the O and M department. Capital projects, I've actually got a little bit less slated in for this next year, simply because we don't have any large water main projects that we're gonna bid out next year. We've got some little ones that we're gonna do in-house, we can save a significant amount of money, and I had budgeted a healthy amount this fiscal year that I can, will carry over to next year, so I, I trimmed that number down quite a bit. Of that, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred thousand of it's gonna be dedicated to service line replacement, as we talked about before, we're replacing the places. So we are, we are starting to do that. And then the fixed expenses, again, increase, and that's really being caused by the, the jobs control portion of the project number one. So that's a really super quick summary of the expenditures, again, I'm not trying to skip over anything, but you see how many light items are on there, feel free to pour over it more and reach out to me if you have any questions. On the flip side, kind of a summary of where we stand, those were our fund balances on sewer and water as of a couple of weeks ago, so very healthy fund balances. So my budget proposes that we use a little bit of that fund balance this year, we don't wanna let that get too out of control, it's, we're in a great position, Nathan can probably speak to that. So we're in a pretty good position there. Rate increase proposal would be about a three-point-eight percent rate increase. We did not increase rates last year, and I gave kind of a history over the last, since two thousand and fourteen, of where our rate increases have been. And if you recall, back in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, we went through a rate study, which actually generated a nice, great rate study that I can use every single year, I plug in the expenditures, and it's gonna spit out a nice, nice number for me to use. So there's a three-point-eight percent proposed rate increase, which would be about two dollars and fifty-nine cents a month for the average residential property, water and sewer. So that was, like, really, like, my project for that.
I appreciate this a lot.
Yeah.
This is extremely helpful.
There are a lot of numbers on these things, and I know everybody gets kind of dizzy reading them, but.
It's not an extraction, right, from the White Islands, you told me?
Anytime you want, it will lie in my line.
Thank you.
I guess I do have a question about the lime water removal for the back lagoon. We're only hopefully getting a quarter of it done with fifty thousand, is there a reason why you can't look at having half of it done if we have quite, quite a significant fund balance?
We absolutely could, if you want to, I'd be more than happy to do that, this is, this is my story, Greg said I always have good stories, so I'll tell a story. So, our front lagoon holds about fifteen thousand cubic yards, we bid that out as a fifteen thousand cubic yard complete removal. They don't always get it all, they get most of it. The back lagoon is about thirty thousand cubic yards, but it's hard to measure that, and you can't just, they have to mix it with water when they take it out, so what they take out isn't a true representation of what's in there, right? See what I'm saying, because you're adding water, mixing, loosening up. So another community, when we bid this out in two thousand sixteen, there was three bidders, and Biotech was the low bidder, and we got outstanding price. So what they do is they bid, they find as a lump sum, and right now, that lump sum is around a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars just to clean out the front. And the back is a per cubic yard price. Another community in Michigan bid this, a similar total clean out of forty-five thousand cubic yards of the deck that we have, and it was nine hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
Wow.
That's scary, so I would be more than happy to increase that number and try to get more. Problem is finding the fields to put it on. Because what we do is we land apply it, we don't, but we hire Biotech, and they land apply it, and it's used for pH adjustment, so once a field has so much, you know, they can't take it anymore for a while, so now they gotta go farther out, so I can definitely try to get more.
There's a lot of factors going on in that.
So is the, is the driving car, or variable of the, that service, finding the fields? Because the process doesn't change.
So the process doesn't change, it's, it's. So the process doesn't change, it's getting it to the field.
Correct.
So you might have to drive twenty-five.
So, so if it's a, if it's a field nater in township, sweet.
Yeah.
Odds are, though, it's a field in Saginaw.
Yeah, well, we can't go that far, because everything is monitored through Eagle, it's much like our biosolids, there's a program that we have, and they can only put on certain fields. The line is a little bit simpler than biosolids, biosolids is, it's a mess, I mean, there's economic rates that have to be calculated. But I don't necessarily think we would have to go that far, but still, you add five or ten miles one way to a trip, your costs are going to start going.
Yeah, because it's a lot of trucks to get thirty thousand cubic yards.
So if I can, if I can get them to get more out, I'll find out from them how much they think they can get, and I'll be more than happy to, even if we have to do a bunch of it.
Well, Will, when you put that on a field, is it good for only one year, or is that?
You know, when they do it, it just gets worked in the soil, and it's just to bring that pH up, and it's just a lot of factors probably, like what kind of crop are going to plant on it? I'm not an expert in that, the economic uptake and all that kind of stuff, depends on the precipitation, I'm sure there's all kinds of factors.
I guess I was just thinking, if you had a set number of fields that we always took it to, but if some fields don't need to be replenished every year, then I'd succeed where you run into the problem.
We actually had Johnson Controls look at maybe taking the line, mixing it with our biosolids, mixing it with mass compounds. And it just wasn't, the money wasn't there.
And there's no other place for us to put it, it has to go on field?
You can, there's actually kilns, all right, we were actually asked to invest in a lime kiln. You can actually take this to, and it will dry it, and it will make it reusable, but the cost of building that kiln was like fifty million dollars. That was a comment, but it was the wrong one. So, there are other options with it, but you, you could, you could landfill it, if the landfill will take it. We looked at these things, they're like bio bags, you put them in this giant bag, and then the water just seep out of it, and then when all the water's gone, just pick it up, take it to the landfill. We looked at all kinds of stuff, there's presses you can use, but very expensive, we can't have the max stuff. Right now, it's probably the best thing we got, without putting a huge capital investment.
Good question, though.
If you want, if you want to look into doing a, an R O plant that's twelve, fourteen million dollars, we don't have to do lime anymore. And Tim Ritchie will love you, because that's what he wants, but it's, it's expensive.
Well, it does concern me if we're going to keep filling it.
Yeah, the problem was, there was just a period of time where nobody bothered to take anything out. So, it got to the point where it's like, uh-oh, what are we going to do? So, you know, several years ago, we decided we're just going to start digging out. We've got backup plans, I mean, we, so, at the end of Riverside, that area that's, that's in the fast, above flat, yeah, that was, that's old line lagoon. If you go into that fence and go out to the left, there's a slumkin area in there, that's what I took you guys walking around, that's an old line lagoon. We were ready to hire somebody with a backhoe and a dump truck, just start digging and hauling it, digging and hauling it, and just letting it go on the ground, it will just harden and turn into a. So we have backup plans, we just don't necessarily want to do it.
Good to hear. Thanks, Phil.
Other questions for Will?
I do have one more question, I don't know, I didn't catch the four hundred thousand for capital projects for service line replacement? About, like, is that a, how, what percentage is that?
So we're required, yeah, we're required to replace these, what are called lead services, commercial services, at a rate of about five percent per year for the next twenty years. Given the numbers that I've got so far in our inventory, it looks like we're going to need to do between a hundred fifty and a hundred eighty a year average. So that, that's four hundred thousand is going to cover probably, probably two hundred to two hundred fifty. We try to do as many of them as we can on our own, but some of them we come across, we'll hire somebody to come in and deal directly with them or whatever, help us out, but that's going to be an item on, in the budget for a bit longer.
I just didn't know what that covered, how many?
Yeah, my, I'm hoping it's two hundred a year, I figured a two thousand dollar average cost. Some of them we've been able to do for seven hundred, eight hundred bucks, some of them have been about thirty-five hundred, it depends on how involved it is.
Will? Thanks, Will. So once there's any other general questions, may I be turned to Paul the COVID man?
I have a couple, I have any budget question for the mayor? Fifteen hundred dollars a year enough for the H R C to do what their charges do?
According to their chair, yes, when I talk to her.
Okay, I don't want to hear about it in six months, if you don't have enough money. What will be the money for?
They can go do like different, like, putting in his.
That's fine.
But didn't Chuck give donations for that, for special, is that in there?
But it's pretty, and it is in there, and I want to say it's like depleted, or it was like four hundred dollars, and I just saw it, I just looked, it's like four hundred dollars.
Yeah, there's not, there's not.
Because I, I just looked at it when I was going to care. So I, I have a question, I just want to make sure I'm reading it correctly, Brad, so, um, on page twenty-three of thirty-eight, under downtown development thirty, administration, the wages, is that, looking at the Main Street person, is that what that is?
That's what that is.
Okay.
You know, they, that's not all reflected in, well, that's reflected in their revenues, not as all coming from city, right, their program is that they are supposed to raise funds on their own.
Right.
So if you were to look at the.
But I didn't think I saw it on revenue, that's what I was looking at, that's why I was asking you. I was on that page.
Help me out, Nathan, which I, which line?
I was just.
Five, your revenue.
Oh, yeah.
Thirty-five.
That was looking at the contribution.
Oh, there it is, it's called evaporative, no.
Contribution general.
Yeah.
Right, so they, that reflects what they asked for from you, but then the rest of it, well, I mean, it's not specifically matched to the director position, but the rest of it, they need to fund from their other sources, including event revenue and contributions.
Thanks.
Also saying, this is, this is an odd year, Greg, so it'll be a charter, local compensation, so it has to meet, not saying I deserve a raise, but I'm saying they have to meet for that process, this fiscal year, so. But I do deserve.
I agree.
Be serious.
When was the last time we got one?
The sale of the theater center, Van Caster, maybe before the county.
No.
Is that a holdup on their end, or ours?
I, well, probably both, but that is one of the Manilow folders, the Nathan left for me, and it's, in fact, was that you in there, Nathan?
Yeah.
The only remaining Manilow folder is the theater center. And the question is to, first question is to make sure that we, given how we came to be the owner of it, are entitled to give it away.
Yeah.
So that's, that's where we're, and Matt came to see me about it a couple of weeks ago, she was like, I said, all right, I will look into that, and I pulled that Manilow folder out of her pile, and.
Oh, okay, I mean, nobody's using it right now, so.
For the record, did you give clear direction from us what we want, you and Matt to look into when it comes to, what are, so make sure you understand, you've got clear direction on that. And we recorded it.
We can watch.
You said.
Um, yeah.
Are we good?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, it is now time for public comment, just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address.
Ken Tokar's, one ten, you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so I thought it was really interesting that Matt brought up all these issues about maintaining the splash pad. You got Jim Bearman wants a Christmas tree park, and nobody questions all the man-hours of D P W for that, I find that kind of crazy. Another interesting thing is ten thousand dollars for scales, you know, we have inaccurate water meters, so why do we need to keep better track of stone? Another item, which I sent you an email on, is, and this is probably the third time I brought it up, is the U S Consumer Protection Agency requirements for bleacher. The bleachers at Heritage Park are not safe, someone can get hurt on them, and you guys still fail to put any money towards that. I would prefer to see money go towards bleachers before we put any money towards a pit wall park. Finally, I wanted to piggyback on Commissioner Watson and Commissioner Health with respect to the fund balance. I think someone mentioned five hundred thousand, I'm thinking a little bit bigger. The pension deficit is twenty-four million dollars, there's eleven different funds in there, the largest one is the admin at nine point nine million. I would like to see you take the police and the steel, which is D P W, three point two million for the police, one point six for steel. That would be a total of four point eight million dollars that you could put towards the pension deficit. It would still put us below nineteen million, and then I would ask that you put something in place, so, you know, just let's say some people aren't here next year, that someone can, so the police then could never have a pension deficit, once it's paid off. The steel can never have a pension deficit. Then, once those two are paid off, you'll have a little bit under twenty million that you'll still owe. And then, you work towards, like, when you sell land, you got the next one, which is the sergeants, which that's three point nine million, let's pay off the sergeants. Then, once that's paid off, let's work and get the fire paid off, let's use any of the additional revenue from the fire department to pay off their pension deficit. Then it will leave just the administration, which is about ten million dollars. Thank you very much.
Hello, Joaquin Ramos here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful, all right, I hope the city will consider the splash pad, people on the east side have been looking for some sort of recreation for a while. And also, it's not kid ourselves, even if you put it in, there's no way only people on the east side are going to be using it. People from all over the city that can get there, you know, through vehicles, are also going to consider using it. I had also liked the point, I find it interesting that we, that there was a question about asking Habitat or the east side for money for the splash pad, but there was no question about, what about the pickleball court, do we charge anyone for that? What about the dog park, which even went over what it was originally supposed to be? It's a little bit concerning that we're constantly looking at nickel and diming one particular part of Adrian more than the others. Especially as you're supposed to be representatives of the entire city. Thank you, that's all I have for this time.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments?
Let me get back in person.
Yes.
It is great to be back in person.
And I feel this worked really well.
Yeah, I was on the cusp of quality, like, some of that here, from people online.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
So, who? Clark?
I have a motion for Commissioner Health, a second from Commissioner Strayer, all in favor, say aye. Leading is adjourned.